I'd like to call the order, the June 12th Foster Town Council meeting, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, and just for all.
All right, I do not have any announcements, uh, public comment. Mr. Daco?
How you doing? My name's Adam Daco, uh, 119 A Central Pike. Uh, I would like to inform on not only the town of Foster, but the towns of Situate and Gloucester, uh, to inform them that we have a community safety seminar concerning firearms, uh, this Saturday at Highland Rod and Gun at nine AM. Uh, last seminar went absolutely fantastic. Uh, we're looking to do more, uh, in the future. I would like to thank Dennis Smith for organizing this. And it is open to all ages from seven on up, including adults. So please, we would like to see, uh, the community come out and maybe you might learn something new. All right. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Ms. Ryder?
It is on. Uh, several months, is it on? Yeah.
The numbers are, yeah, it's on, it's on.
It's not lit?
No, it's, it's on, it's just light.
It's light, okay, there we go, okay. Um, several months ago, the council, uh, approved having, uh, three days, three additional days besides Earth Day, uh, have the GPW garage open for, on a Saturday for people to come and drop off mattresses and oil and electronics and so on. Because they can't get there during the week since it closes at two, two o'clock, two thirty. And it's not open on Saturdays. And a lot of people can't get there at six AM because they're on their way to work. Uh, your first, if I remember correctly, the first date was supposed to be sometime in June, or that's what it was shooting for. But I haven't heard anything about it. I do understand that, um, yes, the DPW budget was cut and one of the concerns was staffing this particular activity. Um, however, the DPW director is salaried. And if you had just one other person, that's probably less than a thousand dollars a year. I really think this is needed. I know at the end of my road, um, there are two mattresses and two box springs. I did call town hall to, I don't know what good that does, but I called town hall just to let somebody know. Um, and it's still there four days later. So I'm hoping that this does go through and that people will have access because I think people will use it and we definitely need it.
I can add to the agenda item for next meeting.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. May?
Evening, my name is Walter May. Live at twenty-nine Anthony Road Town. And, uh, the subject of my, uh, address tonight is going to be, uh, the, uh, safety of the residents of Anthony Road and the Anthony Road Bridge. Uh, last spring, Mr. Tom Hall and myself met with the, uh, planner, Mr. McGregor. Who we were, he's gone now, but our, uh, concern was status of the bridge on Anthony Road. Mr. McGregor told us that there was a survey done and the people on the road didn't want the bridge replaced because of the through traffic from, uh, Route ninety-four out to Route six. I've interviewed eighteen residents, Anthony Road, not all of them, just eighteen, and that was within the last week or so. No one was canvassed and nobody made any expression of closing that road and abandoning the bridge. So I think we ought to find out who generated the survey. And, uh, results are not the same that I got.
Walter, how long has that been, that bridge been out? Oh, and yeah, I'm on, um, how long has it been out?
I closed that bridge when I worked here.
So two thousand four or five, oh, the first time you were here.
Yeah. I closed it just before I left.
Okay.
That was around nineteen, I'm guessing now nineteen ninety-eight, something like that. The bridge had been closed for about thirty years. Enough's enough.
Walter, what was your reason for closing?
Pardon me?
What was the reason for closing it? Because it would be, it needs repair, okay?
Town bridges are inspected, uh, depending on their size. You're inspected by the state and the state either gives it an okay or not okay. Anthony Road got not okay, so we had to, we had to close the road. The plan was to take the plans that I had for, uh, Central Pike Covered Bridge, expand them a little bit and use the same plans to do Anthony Road. Uh, there are some, uh, some instances that have taken place since then that would make the bridge better for maintenance by using five eighty-eight steel. Five eighty-eight steel, uh, if you look at the high line that crosses Route six down in Johnson, near two ninety-five, the, uh, electric lines are on, uh, steel things and they're all brown. Now, what happens with five eighty-eight steel is they'll deteriorate to a minimum and then it freezes the further deterioration of the steel. And, uh, I didn't know about that. I found out about that a couple of years after I left. Uh, and I talked with an engineer from DOT and he told me that it's common for them to use that steel on bridges today because of the lack of maintenance. I did a roadside study last week. My wife and I did it. We counted dead trees. There were fifty-eight dead trees from my house to the end of the road. I live at pole twenty-nine. There was fifty-eight dead trees large enough to come down and hit the power lines and block the road. But we needed a good windstorm to start it. As of, for instance, the day after the financial town meeting, a dead tree come down on pole thirty-one and it set a fire. The fire department showed up, rescue squad showed up. They couldn't do anything because the tree was still alive. Finally, the light company showed up and they turned the electric off and the, that allowed the fire to be extinguished. Now with fifty-eight dead trees there, I would say there's a pretty good chance that we're going to have one a month come down. With the bridge being out, you've got all those people trapped. And there's a safety issue there. And I think it's a responsibility of the council to take some action to get that damn bridge built. The, uh, modification of those plans for, uh, the covered bridge should be located in the town hall. I drew them up myself. They were redrawn by the DOT and the bridge was built there. Now, we just recently replaced the bridge. I don't know who did that or how much it cost, but the reason for that bridge being replaced was deterioration. It was lack of maintenance. There's no maintenance done on any of these bridges. Now, the, the, uh, DOT employees that are currently employed, there were three of them that assisted me in building six bridges in this town. So those guys are still there. They still know how to build a bridge or they know the mechanics of it. So, uh, I guess what I'm saying is the protection and the safety of the people in the town of Foster on Anthony Road are all in jeopardy because of that lack of bridge. If a tree comes down and you can't control when the tree comes down, but at least it gives us another escape route going out the other end of the road. As it is now, tree coming down, everybody is trapped.
Okay, so I'll review and try to find that survey. I may not find anything on the survey that was done by the previous planner. But, uh, with that, and then what I can do is I can put it on the next agenda item as new business for the bridge. And we can continue with that moving forward, um, and investigate what it would cost for us to actually work on that bridge.
I like, one of, I'd like to make one other comment. There's, uh, I had a conversation with somebody in the treasurer's office. And, uh, I found that there's one taxpayer, Tom Foster, that pays ninety-five thousand dollars a quarter taxes. And they send nobody to school and they put nobody.
Ninety-five thousand?
Ninety-five, in excess of ninety thousand, ninety-five, I think it was ninety-five, six hundred. If you took, you took one quarter, in my estimation, one quarter of those taxes will build that damn bridge. All the quarters after that will build our police station. It's another thing that brings me up is the lack of, uh, progress on that police station.
We're working on it.
We'll see, I'm welcome.
Yeah.
Not fast enough.
Agreed, agreed.
You know, the modification of the plans eliminating the basement was the wrong thing to do.
That's, that's another story. Yeah, yeah, so.
I rest my case. Uh, I'd like to ask Mr. Hall to make one comment to you folks regarding the conversation he had with an individual who would supply the town with steel for that bridge. After that, that's it. Mr. Hall? I hope you guys don't move that fast.
Sorry.
Tom Hall, twenty-three Anthony Road. I've been here since sixty-six, love this place more or less most of the time. But I got two problems on this bridge that nobody seems to have a good answer for. Number one, you're losing money by not building it. Every day you're losing money. In the last twenty years, the town has lost enough money to probably to have replaced the bridge twice. And you don't notice it because it's, but it's very simple. Every day the school is in, that's half the days of the year, there are four buses that go down that road, two high school in, uh, high school, middle school, one. Maybe there are times when there are not kids in all of those buses and some, but a bus going down that road has to turn around and come back. It retraces its steps instead of going on a circuitous route. That costs a lot of gasoline, costs a lot of time, costs a lot of money. You could have built a bridge with the money that you blew away. I don't mean you personally, I'm saying, you know, that the town blew away by not fixing that Cots and Pickin' Bridge. That's not to say anything about the time, the fact that if somebody on Anthony Road wants to come over here and do business, they have to double their mileage to get way around in a circle to get here and then way around in a circle back. Whereas if we came right across the four corners, it would halve the amount of space. And that's, that's a personal thing to some degree. But in the long run, it means that people in Foster that live on Anthony Road are being gypped, if you will, by having to make further trips that would not have to be there. Because they could be paid for by the buses. The other thing that kind of goes up my nose a little bit. I have a coffee buddy who I used to see very regularly at Shady Acres back in the days pre-COVID. And I was grousing to him one day about the, the road and having to go around, being on a dead end. And he said, oh, that's going to be over and done pretty soon. This is about fifteen years ago. I said, oh, how's it going to be over and done? He said, the state has given us access to a couple of pieces of steel that are big enough to go across that bridge. And they've asked me, he's an engineer, they've asked me to examine it and see if that steel would take, would do the job. And he said, I looked at it and it's fine, it'll do the job. So I'm sure that they'll fix the road now.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. All right, um, consent agenda?
I'm recusing, I already.
You did, okay.
I think the motion we accept the consent agenda as presented.
I make a motion, we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second, we have a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Approved? Uh, not on the consent. Not on the consent. I consent.
Because I think the warrants are, everything's in there. If I had a question from.
Yep. Before I prove it. We need to know what's being discussed. You have to, you have to let us know what's being, what your discussion is going to be.
I'm going to be discussing the statute of limitations. If you guys are going to discuss it, the council is going to discuss it.
We have to, either way, we're full out the whole, the abatements.
I mean, you can listen to this right now. But you're going to actually have discussion of, but yes, it needs to, it's not necessarily.
Right. Okay. All right, so I entertain a motion to remove the item number three, consent agenda, statute of limitations, abatements.
How can we do, or we've already voted?
We didn't approve it, yeah. So we made a motion, we seconded it, discussion.
I voted.
You can.
Yeah, I know, I'm trying to gaze, you never said the name.
But we want to be able to discuss.
Second, draw a motion.
Yeah, we're going to, we have to go backwards.
Okay, my motion.
Who seconded that?
Who's second?
I'm second.
Okay. So we have a removal of motions.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm recusing.
Now, I will entertain a motion to remove the statute of limitations abatements out of consent agenda.
So moved.
Second, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
The other two, okay, I'll entertain a motion to, uh.
Make a motion, we accept the consent agenda with the exception of the abatements.
Okay.
Well, amended, consent agenda amended.
Okay, as amended.
Second, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, now we get that fixed.
I guess it's on. Um, when I saw this on the agenda, which thanks for, thank you for doing the agenda so early, um, and I saw all of the abatements. I know that there were questions last year and I have some questions this year. This is an awful lot of money. Without just the principal, you're forgiving about fifty thousand dollars. With the principal, it's a hundred and, almost a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Now, I went to town hall, so there's no mystery on how I got the information. It's under the, um, Access to Public Records Act. And what is there, like thirty pages of people who have either tangible or motor vehicles? Believe me, I get, you know, this bankruptcy, there's people who have, you know, now living in Hemlock Village or people have moved out of state, out of town and whatever. But there are a significant amount who live in town. And we know them and they are not destitute. And I don't understand why it takes ten years. You know where they live. So why, why is it possible just to sit on not paying your taxes for ten years?
Are you suggesting our tax collector should go door to door to demand?
No, I'm not, but you do hire a company.
We do hire collection agencies and they won't take, they won't take collections older than ten years. Even the state doesn't have any legislative, like, bite to collect.
Okay, but up until ten years, I assume they've been doing their.
Yeah, and delinquent notices time and time again. We don't hold call people who owe us money, but we do, we do take every um, opportunity to collect that money. In fact, the state used to assist us with the motor vehicles, as I'm sure there's people even here who might know that. Like if you, if you, if you're in delinquency with your motor vehicles, we would send something to the state and the state would no longer allow you to register your car.
Yeah, I, I know.
Getting somewhat lax with that because they're no longer, we no longer tax motor vehicles. So that's not a priority for them, one. Two, uh, most people who are, are not try, are not paying their motor vehicle taxes, they simply register their cars in their husband's or other person's name to avoid it. So they're no longer worried about it. So they all know that they owe motor vehicle taxes because they've received for years. I doubt we wasted the money in the last five years, but I know that we actually did a few years ago because we had a change, every time we have a change in collector, they send it to everybody. They send delinquent notices to everybody. You, we can't force people to pay. Motor vehicle and tangible taxes are the two worst taxes because you cannot force people, there's very little bite in getting them to pay. Unlike ta, unlike real estate where the state has legislative, um, legislatively approved tax sales. So, um, but for motor vehicles, they did help again by not letting people re-register their car. So every two or three years, we'd get an influx of people who needed to register their car and they'd come in and pay their taxes. The problem is the problems with the ones that are older than like two or three years, the interest outweighs the principal. There's no way for me to, so we've had people come up and say, like, I would pay the principal, but I'm not paying the interest. That's not how it works. So I don't have any legal right, nor does our tax collector to take a payment at this point and apply it only to the principal because they want to be made whole. I can't do that. It always gets applied interest first, whether it's real estate. We don't pick and choose who we do that for. If the state wanted to, and I know they have discussed in the past, that they would have a day or a week of amnesty, so to speak, where they would allow people to come in and pay their taxes, um, without penalty if they were to make themselves whole. There's a lot of, um, factors with that, like homeowners, we have homeowners who are behind for three years and it's significant interest. And I don't think they had enough support that that passed. So basically, we're only writing off taxes that are owed for motor vehicles or tangible, there's no real estate, um, that has been uncollected for what, some of these people no longer even live.
Oh, I, I believe it, I mean, I've got the list.
They certainly don't live here, so, you know.
But the fact is, there are people who do live here and we know them.
We can't force people to pay and I can't pick and choose as a finance director, nor would I ask or encourage our tax collector to pick and choose who they abated and who they didn't based on who they knew lived in town. That's almost anti, that's almost the opposite of, it's of, of favoritism. You're not favoring your own residents and you're forgiving everybody.
No, I, I understand that.
How would you do this, plan? Like, how would you, how would you proceed to not be carrying thirty years of outstanding taxes which overinflates your revenue in our government-wide financial statements for revenue that you're not.
I would think that the town could come up with some kind of carrot and stick thing.
If we could, I think every community would and most communities write off, I don't know too many communities, if any, I actually don't know of any, that don't write off receivables that are greater than ten years that are legislatively allowed to be written off. Because we don't even have a software program that's going to carry that over because we would have people who owe it from thirty years ago.
But this is insulting to people who do pay their taxes.
Oh, I one hundred percent agree, like, but I don't know what you want us to do. So at this point, we're writing off motor vehicles and a few years, there's nothing else to write off because we no longer tax that. The state has addressed the problems that all municipalities have collecting untangible taxes by giving us a credit now for the first fifty thousand dollars. So if you were a business and you had one hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment that we were going to tax, we would only be able to tax you on the fifty because you have fifty thousand dollar credit and the state is reimbursing us for that. Because we know that we, it's, it's very difficult to collect on somebody who owes five hundred dollars or whatever. So they've allowed that, so now our collection rate on tangible property is going to go up. Our collection rates on motor vehicles never, was never high and it was never going to go up because it was the worst one. Again, the only time we were able to collect was when the state.
It seems like you're rewarding people for not paying their taxes. They just know, I don't, I don't pay them and they can't do anything.
They're not going to pay them anyway.
You're just not going to pay it.
It's not like, oh, last week, we got to pay it. It's not like last week or even, or even last year. I can't tell you the last time that we received a payment on those two levies.
Well, I mean, there's a very large elephant in the room and it pertains to last year when a council person got like eight thousand dollars forgiven. This year it's five thousand. Now, I don't think anybody who's sitting on the council should do this. Not when they are able to pay the money to just sit on it and let it go.
That's a different story, but I'm not, I don't even know the amount, but I do know the amount you're quoting isn't really correct because what we're really abating is the principal.
I understand, but it all goes away.
I understand what you're saying, but I've answered the questions that else I can't.
Fine, well, there seems, you know, or again, it's a slap in the face and people should just not pay their taxes, that's it. I follow. Even send out the tax for.
Yes. The numbers are on there, it's on.
Nicole Andrew Scavage, sixty-nine Foster Center Road, um, two brief comments. One, I just, I take issue a little bit with how it's presented in the agenda because it comes off as a statute of limitations abatement, which would, you know, tie everybody's hands and after ten years it would be abated. But neither motor vehicle nor tangible fall under the ten-year statute of limitations for those types of abatements. Those are very specific categories of taxation, um, which motor vehicles and tangibles don't fall under. And, and second, I would like, if there's any discussion or, or comments about what's being done, um, I guess tangibles has already been, uh, discussed, but what's being done to further collection of delinquent accounts, um, moving to, moving forward into the future.
We have a really good, um, tax collector who regularly sends out, um, delinquent. In fact, if we have an email on file, she'll email them to them. So at least twice a year, and believe me, this gets very closely, to send out, um, collection notices. She's worked with, we have, we'll, we'll work with anybody. I, I mean, you could talk to people who are delinquent, they've called us and we'll put people, pay people on a payment plan. I mean, we, within the legal guidelines, we can't erase interest. It's not our right to do that. But we help them and as long as they're paying, we never send somebody who's paying. But we help them, and as long as they're paying, we never send somebody who's paying. As long as they've worked with us and talked to us and stay to what, stay to, um, true to the agreement that we've come up with. Um, we would never send somebody to, um, tax sale or any of that, we've worked with people from motor vehicles, we've given, we had a one-shot um, effort, so when people had motor vehicle taxes, delinquent, and they were gonna have their car, um, registration default or whatever, as long as they contacted us, told, came up with a payment plan, made a payment towards that and made an agreement to pay it, we would release their registration so they could register their car. Nine out of ten times, the second that happens, they no longer paid. This is what happened, so then they would never get that same deal again, obviously, but we've done everything in our power, we contract with, um, collection agencies, for the ones that they will take, because they won't take these. They've had them, couldn't collect on them, and these are the ones that they're done with. That we, these were all sent at one point or ti- or another to a collection agency, so we, we do do quite a bit, actually, to collect.
How many of those went into litigation?
Um, you're not gonna litigate something that's a thousand dollars.
Not even in aggregation?
Um, I will say that, uh, Rossi and Rossi has gone and, um, filed lawsuits against people who are, um, in their collection that we've turned over for them on our behalf. And then they will make a settlement and agreement or do something with that in some way, shape, shape or form through court, but that's rare, that's very rare.
Are they entitled to waive interest if it goes to litigation?
Leaving interest. So that, that never really goes away or whatever, and it eventually ends up writing off, but at that point, it's better to get what they're willing. That they're collecting on what they can get, that's all they're, they're obligated to do. You know what I mean?
Thank you.
Yes.
An indulgence.
Mr. Friday, please, thank you.
Uh, I was sitting on the two ninety-five for an hour in an accident, not my accident, and I missed a certain citizen, so I asked for an indulgence, that's not, I can come back next time.
Right after this.
Yeah, this has nothing to do.
Right after this. Any other questions on this, alright, so I'll entertain a motion to accept, uh, item number three of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any more questions?
Nope.
All in favor?
Yes.
When my wife and I moved here, we came up with the same world famous in Foster. So, the idea that the Republican Party has been in charge of this town for about twenty years. Our finances are so messed up. Although the names and the faces change, I haven't come to you. I have never listened to me. Although their names and chains, um, faces change, the idea of how you're trying to run this town, uh, holds us back. Um, I wanna know which one of you will go out to your constituents and say you're proud to have lost the police station to be more than double, more than double, and built two-thirds of what you're gonna build ten years ago. If we had qualified councils, uh, they would have done the citizens and the building committees favor and fired them the third year. Um, a management team that stays in charge in twenty years and cannot produce more than we produce, I would hope, I know this isn't gonna happen, that you would just go away. Now, Mr. Plouffe, personally to you, alright, do you not take phone calls from your constituents? Or you just do not take phone calls from me?
I do take phone calls.
No, but not for me then.
No, I take it from you.
Well, I'm sorry?
I take it from you also.
You haven't taken one.
We can discuss this offline.
Okay, thank you, alright, so you, uh, and actually, you didn't have to answer.
I know, I know it is.
So, thank you, alright, but I would hope at, with decency that you go away, because what you've done to the finances of this community, we will never recover from. We're never gonna have retail because we don't have population. We missed the target, the boat on warehouse. You probably have one thing left, a federal bill. Alright, if you go into affordable housing, this year you had three kindergartens. If you go back to three grades in the pain school, you're gonna be at four hundred, and it's gonna ruin your budget. And I appreciate the end of.
You're welcome. Alright, swearing in. Pardon guys for the long. Also, Daniel. I'm gonna stand up swearing up.
Yes.
First of all, I wanna say thanks, everybody, for coming. Welcome, uh, a new police officer to the town of Foster. We are very, very lucky to have such an individual. So, sir, would you please raise your right hand? State your name and position, please. Thank you. Do you, Daniel Ariel, solemnly swear that you will be true and faithful unto the town of Foster and support the town charter, and that you will be true and faithful unto this state and support the laws and constitution thereof and the Constitution of the United States, and that you will well and truly execute the position of police officer, which you have been elected and appointed, or until another be engaged in your place, or until you legally are legally discharged therefrom, so help you God. Thank you very much, congratulations on your new position of police officer for the town of Foster, and at this point, I would like to welcome Mrs. Ariel, also known as Beth, to pin the official badge on her husband.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Congratulations. Alright, uh, old business, uh, we have, uh, garbage fee scheduled for non-household waste items.
Is in here, right? And should we say? It isn't. For the bulk waste? Alright, I can.
I mean, your motion, we table it for the next meeting.
I mean, yeah, I could, I could. I didn't, I sent it to Steve.
Yeah.
Did you get it?
We have, we have a motion.
Uh, we can, we can.
Motion table next meeting.
Yeah, I should have CC'd you on it soon, that's my fault.
Uh, we have a motion in a second. All in favor? Sorry, motion to table to, yeah, next meeting, we're good, we're good.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Yes, technically.
Yes, yeah, we are continuing.
Sue, I'm gonna send it to you.
Yes, absolutely.
Then it's just the rain itself killing the road. So, if, if you postpone this for the next meeting, um, we were going to have three Saturdays open for
Yeah, that's.
Bringing in the furniture, but by doing that, now we lose June, it was supposed to be June, August, and October.
Yeah, that's something we're gonna add to the next, next meeting anyway.
Yeah, but you're gonna miss June, we're gonna miss June.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Look, I have a few questions about this, if that's okay.
If it, is it regards to the garbage?
Yes.
If we just tabled it.
Wait till next.
Yeah, we have to discuss that next meeting. Because we just tabled it.
Okay, so what's gonna happen to the three Saturdays?
I'm gonna add it to an agenda item for next, for next meeting. Alright, uh, old business number two, NEC Police Station, uh, build progress, okay? So we had a meeting, uh, with the building committee, and we got the seven point five percent down to a GMP, which is a guaranteed maximum price of four point six eight million, which is what we have set aside right now for the police station. So to move on from step three of this process is, I am requesting a motion to approve step three at a guaranteed maximum price of four point six eight million on the police station. We have a motion, we have a second, is there any discussion?
Just one thing, Steve.
Yep.
Can that increase in any way?
No, guaranteed maximum price that cannot go over four point six eight million.
Okay. Alright.
Any other discussion? Okay. Yes.
So, does that include all the money that's been paid to the architects at this point?
Yes, that's the total.
No, does that include all the money that's been paid to architects at this point?
Pre, the previous architect.
Pre.
Yeah.
Pre this vote.
No.
That's the, that's the.
So the answer is no.
No.
Okay, does it include?
Oh, okay.
Yes, yes, yeah.
It wa- it was hard to understand, um, does it include future costs to finish the project? Kelly.
Future, future court, no.
No, okay, so, so when I give a um, just a little remark that it's gonna come in at more than double, I'm probably more correct.
No, this, this contract, this agreement.
No, this contract is for the build, or the build. Alright, is that the furniture?
We're not concerned about the furniture.
No, it does not.
So it is not the complete cost of building the police station. We might both be right on.
Not the complete cost.
Thank you.
Right, outfitting, correct, the building itself will be complete with this count.
It's a build.
The actual.
I corrected the word, it, we are building it.
Yes.
Yes.
So.
Okay, so we had a motion in a second, and any other discussion? All in favor? Post, alright. Okay, item number three, uh, recognition of Juneteenth as a town holiday, um, so.
We did.
We recognize it for all of them, and it, it just has to be changed in contracts.
No, that's different, that's different.
I think that we did this in the public session, but I think you need to fix it in the executive session so that we can adjust the.
Contracts.
Yeah.
Yep, that's. Alright, so.
Can you just remove that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, or, or Juneteenth is now a holiday for all of the unions.
It is anyways.
Yeah.
It's, it's already gonna be discussed, um, in executive session.
It's already on there. Yeah, okay, so we, we don't need to take any action on that. Uh, new business, uh, NRI for each use of fairgrounds and maintenance. Is she here?
Hello. Uh, my name is Shelley Fitzgerald, I'm actually the poultry superintendent at the NRI for each fair. So we're wondering if we can use your fairgrounds to have an outdoor movie night as a fundraiser. The money's being raised to go into, um, the buildings. And then I have a huge favor, is it possible to waive the hundred dollar rental fee?
We can fly on that.
So I have, uh, on the twelfth, look for movie night, four P M.
Uh, six, I, I see.
The twelfth?
I s- oh, the June, of the twelfth at six P M.
July twelfth.
Yeah, at six P M.
Four to eleven.
Yeah.
That's what I have here, okay.
Okay, Sue, is that date available?
It's alright, okay.
Yep, alright, so.
I'm taking a motion to.
I, I will make a motion to allow the NRI for H Fair Committee uh, to use the fa- fairgrounds on July twelfth, twenty twenty-five at six P M, is what, you said four, okay, I don't know, we've got six, six in this letter. Okay, from four P M till eleven P M, and to waive, uh, the license fee.
Second.
Twenty-five dollars for the electric, um, I think we should keep that.
Twenty-five bucks, can you guys do twenty-five bucks for the electric?
Okay.
Okay.
Do you, I'm curious of how the electric works over there, so over by the poultry barn?
Yeah, we'll have it turned down for you, yeah, we'll have. So we have a, a motion and a second? All in favor?
I think she's still.
Oh, oh, yeah, oh. No. Yeah, yeah, that's right, you're going to maintenance next, right?
Yes.
Okay, so let's just approve the, uh.
We're gonna do it in two separate motions.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It's different.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we do have a question.
We didn't.
You did.
I did.
Yeah.
Second.
Yep, I made the motion in the second.
For just the application? Any other discussion?
And the waiver of the.
And the waiver of the.
Yes.
No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, Charlie, now you can go on to the next.
Okay, thanks, um, so we do have questions about repairs to the buildings, as far as what the town would require from us. So with this wine area, needs to be reconfigured, um, and then concrete smoothed out some, and so it's kind of, um, a rehab. And I, I'm not sure what the town would expect from NRI as far as them.
Permits.
Yeah, I mean.
Now, are you, a rehab, is that knocking the whole thing down and rebuilding it?
I mean, it's in pretty rough shape.
So historically, it's been the, um, the, uh, Old Home Days Committee that maintains the buildings and the the subshed and those buildings also.
So, I wanna, so, yeah.
That's what I was told.
All, all of those. Because we've been doing.
Yeah, I thought they.
But this is a couple things that are
Catastrophic.
So is your question, your question is about what, like, what kind of permitting you would need to do it, or?
Are they bothering in, like, if, if, you know, like the poultry rabbit barn, we'll patch it now, but it's gonna give you roots.
It's the one for me with.
So I'm not.
George. Yeah, I, I'm not sure about that.
My ability to stand. You could allow people to, would serve the whole permit, like.
Yeah.
So I just don't.
So the buck stops here?
I just don't know how to go with this, so the main reason for all of this is to try and get this, I was in here last year for the campers. So the campers are in, which is great, but trying to get the bigger animals in now where people, you know, can't camp, don't camp, whatever, um, feel safe leaving their animals. You know, and the kids showing this wine, it's, it's, it's very tough. Um, I personally have a kind of case, so if one got out, I would.
So, you know, actually, let me, uh.
I s- I saw, I saw your face, and I, I was thinking the same thing, so these, alright, so the animals would be left unattended at night?
So we, we kind of got that somewhat situated, so we're allowed to have a certain amount of campers, um, where hopefully people will feel safe. Where hopefully people will feel safe, you know. And they can, one of the big things was the forage parents is having to drive back and forth. Because they couldn't stay on the property, so they're driving back and forth with their kids. Um, you know, to feed more of their animals, cause it's the kids' responsibility to do that. Not that somebody wouldn't do it, but but that's how it's always been.
Hmm.
Um, and so the campers aren't so much of an issue anymore. Um, now we're just kind of trying to focus on getting the larger animals back in.
I would make a suggestion seeing the D P W directives in charge of building things grounds. That that's where you should start.
I did that last year, I gotta be honest, last year I kind of cut the one round on. And and you know, they were very nice, but it was, well, I don't do that, I gotta talk to this person, well, I don't do that, I gotta talk to this person. So we had spoken about having trees taken down last year, Stanley Tree Company was gonna do it. I came in front of the board last year um with a proposal, I sent the proposal. Last year, we weren't able to get the trees down in time before the fair. Um, and now now it's not in the budget anymore. So in order to move forward with um.
I thought they didn't.
Wine barn and stuff, um, trees have to come down.
I.
How many trees?
I thought there were trees that were.
Recently?
Yeah, yes. It was now like.
Another tree that. They went through that area with the tree company and all the trees that were in that, they're not just gonna cut a lot of trees.
Right.
They did go through that, spent quite a bit of money actually, and then part of it was. Cutting down the trees that were in February or April, they're all dead in that area. They cut down two by the T and W garage, like right, right, if you were coming in that way, there's right that there's a corner right there, they cut down two over there. Two at least over by the town hall and I think one or two over in the field itself by some of those buildings. Yeah, I think there's the one in front of the dairy barn was cut down. It's cut down to about two there. Um, so I don't know, um. It's hard for for me personally, because I don't know the workings of it's it's N R I is within Foster Old Home Days, Foster Old Home Days is part of town and.
But it's separate.
Right, so everything is separate, and so N R I, the four H is. Attempting to fund this on their own pocket. So I mean, I guess we're just wondering, you know, for any, you know, the roofs, um, I mean. Then that's fine, but can we do that? That's the plan, are we considered those buildings grandfather in? I'm not really sure that.
I don't think it'd be grandfather, that's the thing, so it's.
Joanna. We're looking at each other.
Yeah, yeah. You've got this, Joanna, go.
No, I just say that. That you can do it.
Joanna, you might.
I don't think that you can do it without, just on your own, it would have to be something that the town was facilitating, but if you raise the money. And then you wanted to allocate it, the town could facilitate it, but. Because liability wise, it would need to go through, you know, our process, and then I think you gotta put out for bid.
It it's not even that, even if we allowed somebody to do the work and grant that almost as a grant to us. Um, you would still have to follow the process, and I think that's what she's discussing, like the process of like building and zoning, the. And I don't think they could do a repair on a building that we don't have our inspector review.
Yes, I you'd have to go through all the the channels, but I also don't think that you can leave the animals in the barn overnight alone without somebody there. There's a whole nother one, that's a whole nother problem.
So there there is, so there are, there is a camper that usually stays, but. We now are able to have more campers so that the kids can stay and take care of their animals, you know, we could obviously.
That would be.
If they stay, if they if animals are left, Joanna, this is just a question, like. If animals are left there without their owners, um, can they sign a waiver holding the town harmless?
You can sign one, I'm not gonna tell you that it's gonna hold, you know.
I'm just caring.
I I don't know that that's gonna be good enough for the trust.
Hmm.
For our insurance company, because they. And who, what happens if it's something that's damaged on town?
No, I mean, I'm talking about if somebody leaves their cows there and says, hey, you, you who was in the.
And then something happens.
They agree, they agree to watch their animals, I don't know, this one's tough.
Has the moving chance policy during the fair. Cause.
Yes. Yep.
It's U R I for each has their own policy during that fair.
Okay, so that covers that.
Yeah, they.
That covers that.
I think um Foster Fairgrounds, the the committee itself has something like that.
But it's not covering our building. So something happens in because of the the. So I think that's a question.
Over the years, I and I'm not from Foster, so I don't know, so maybe somebody can actually just clarify it, who owns the buildings?
I thought it was old home days. I know for a fact that we insure the buildings, and I also know that those buildings are our on the town's list of capital assets. That said, I they're very old, and I wasn't here when all that occurred, but they are on the town's list of of assets, in fact.
Some type of.
They're on our tax roll.
Entity of the town.
I I believe they're on our tax roll, if we were to run a tax roll for our taxable equipment that that area, those are on our system.
So if a tree were to fall on those buildings, the town would get reimbursed for the repair of those buildings.
That's correct. Well, right, the town's not just gonna keep it.
Tree though. That's.
That's all.
That's a whole, that's. Policy, I don't think it's covering that.
And I think they're referring to right now that animals and like, I don't know.
But if if something happened in this with it, like if the structure, if the roof collapsed or something like that and and hurt an animal or a person or whatever. That's our insurance, it's not the, it's not the insurance for the fair, that that general liability insurance that you or I have. It's for if there was some type of interaction with people, it's not for if we have a structurally unsound, it's not gonna cover that.
Hi, Eldon Chyman, my name is Chrissy Nidichenzo, I'm here with Shelley, I work for the University of Rhode Island for each program. Um, and so I know, just to reiterate a couple of things that Shelley has said, I know it it's come up so many times that these volunteers really want these buildings repaired. They're putting in their own work to repair them, um, U R I has made it very clear that they don't own the building. We we've asked them, um, if they if they do, and we don't have any documentation of that, we don't own those buildings. So we've been trying, kind of like Shelley said, to figure out, okay, well, who who do we need to get permission from to do this? Um, because we would like the fair to continue and to get more animals in and noticed a decrease in participation over the past several years. So we do feel like this is necessary for the ongoing um health of the fair. So like Shelley was saying, I think, um, knowing who owns them is where we keep getting stumped in this conversation every time it comes around each year.
Yeah, so I think they're ours, they're the towns.
I think it, and it looks, something may have happened last year, I think that there may have been a vote, and I don't know whatever happened after that vote. Some type, I think there was some discussion about how we would get repairs done.
It was trees, I think last year the big issue was tree, it was about trees. And some small repairs, but I don't think that they ever intended, D P W is not intending to ever fund those repairs.
If funding came from elsewhere, I I think it's doable, it's just logistic wise, where's the funding coming from, and then it would have to go through our process.
Process, right.
Unless you allowed, I believe, you'll have to look into it, unless you allowed them to grant.
Yeah, that's.
And then you show it as like a grant and aid, so to speak, but you still would have to, and you're starting to say like, what would we have to do? You would still have to, even we would have to get that the that material and that those repairs inspected by our. And they would have to meet those standards, because if they didn't, and you had a bunch of volunteers doing it, and it didn't meet the standard, so you could have the volunteers do it. You could do all of that, the issue would be, you would still have to meet the standards through our building official, and he would have to sign off regardless of who does the work.
Hmm.
I think.
If the building was meant to be deficient and then something happened, we would be liable in every way, regardless of your own insurance, because the building that you're in. Would be was not repaired to the, you know, right now, you know what you're getting, you have it, we didn't make repairs that were not standard. These buildings are old and.
So let me let me research the possible vote from last year, the previous council, um, I have I have. Was Dylan looked at it for me, and then, um, I will work with the D P W director, if it's under buildings and grounds, if that's where we, that's where they are. I'll work with him, and I can follow back up with you, and I'll put it on the next agenda item as old business.
You weren't looking to get.
More definitive.
But it's. You weren't looking to get this done by old home.
Well, yeah, that's the only thing, that's it.
Really know on the buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, we don't, they don't, we don't, we don't fail, um, and so, you know, at the end of the day. We just want, I'm gonna have a good time.
Us too, absolutely.
So wouldn't. Wouldn't it?
Are so, so we're for our fundraising.
Yes, yeah, that one's already correct.
And then.
Yeah, and like I said, let me do a little more research, um, I'm not gonna wait till the next meeting to get back to you, I'll I'll get back to you with the information I have. And then see if we can move forward from there, uh, if it's something else we need to uh take action on here, I'll have it on the old agenda, the next agenda on old business. And then if we have to make a motion on on some type of repair or approval, we can do that then.
Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you.
So, but we are all set to move on.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, I'll be there.
Right.
Uh, approval uh for town clerk's appointment of deputy clerk.
Um, we have a letter from town clerk, Sue Dylan, I'll read it if you'd like. To the honorable town council. Dear town council members, in accordance with article four, town clerk, section four. O two, deputy town clerk, I respectfully submit for your approval, my appointment of Sarah Brailsford. As deputy town clerk for the twenty twenty five through twenty twenty six term. Sarah brings valuable experience to the role, having worked for many years as a personal banker and previously as a teacher. Her strong background in customer service along with excellent references makes her well suited for this position. I am confident that she will be a great asset to the town of Foster, sincerely, Sue Susan, I'm Dylan, town clerk.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve. Uh, the new deputy downtown clerk, the approval of the town clerk to hire the new deputy town clerk.
I'll make a motion to approve uh the town clerk's appointment of uh Sarah Brailsford. As deputy town clerk.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Congrats.
Congrats, that's it, congrats, oh, you are you gonna swear her in?
We have James.
Cristone.
Cristone, the council president.
Nice to meet you.
Heidi Rogers.
Catherine.
Yes. Yes.
Congratulations.
Awesome, thank you.
Hey, next item, summer town council meeting dates. So I guess, uh, historically. The town council has gone down to one one meeting in July, one meeting in August.
Yes.
It hasn't always been that way.
Yeah, I didn't think so, I didn't think it was always like that, I think. Recent past.
I I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know fully. It's been years, okay, yeah, obviously, I'm new to this, so.
People go on vacation and you can't all meet like four, so you they were struggling getting down forms or who was gonna be away, and was there enough? Information with the new year and stuff.
It does not mean that if you say, okay, we're gonna have it on the the second um Thursday. It does not mean that you can't still have your second meeting, or that it has to be posted as a special or any of those things. You just, you know, would not post a meeting for that.
That's actually happened quite a bit, where it wouldn't even be, well, we've ended up how we scheduled one, and we ended up having three for odd reasons or. And they wouldn't even be when you would have expected.
Yeah, cause I could tell you with 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 the police station.
Yeah.
Situation, if we have to have a meeting, we're going.
Schedule special if you need to, you can.
Yeah, it's more of a matter for planning for for everybody who.
Yeah, who's, so obviously, the one, the one uh in question would be the like the tenth. Right? Cause it's right after. Fourth of July, I probably.
I will not be here on the twenty fourth.
You will not be.
No, but I can, I will have, I can have somebody come and I can join on Zoom.
Oh.
I just won't be in this, well.
So we're looking at the intent, or the twenty fourth, so. You could move it to the middle of the month, you've done people.
Yeah, that makes more sense.
No, no, because she doesn't.
Oh, okay.
One, this um, this month is the twenty sixth.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So you think that we much active?
I think the twenty fourth would probably be better.
Well, I think that's a little late, myself personally, the twenty fourth.
But then if we don't do the tenth, then we're gonna have another.
Well, she said we can do the seventeenth too, so.
Joanna just said she can't.
Yeah, well, but I can do the tenth, I will not, those next two weeks, I won't. For two weeks I'll be gone, but I can join on Zoom and somebody else from my office can come, so it will be covered.
Either or we.
If you need me, if they can give, well, an interactive.
We could do the first one in July and the first one in August, then if we need to add one in, you know what I mean, then we're not. Having.
That's what I was gonna say.
The tenth, so July tenth and August fourteenth.
Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, cause the old home days is right around the twenty fifth.
Because the holiday is.
For a special.
Correct, so anybody trying to make that a long weekend?
What holiday is the eleven?
B J day. Is the eleven?
Oh, yeah.
So traditionally, you've tried not to do it that week, because a lot of people go away. Or the long weekend or whatever. Chris, don't you go away in August too?
You could push that to the twenty first, that's smack in the middle, I mean, but you need the the warrants and stuff like that, so.
The eleven. Where in July, I'm just gonna make motion and throw some dates out.
Can we do Thursday?
So Joanna, you said you can't do the seventeenth, but your assistant can be here?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm I'm gonna make a motion that we have our July meeting on July seventeenth. And the August meeting on August fourteenth.
I can't, but I can send somebody, and I can be around. You can, yeah.
What was wrong with the ten?
Yeah. They were looking at some.
Pushing it out a week.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna withdraw my motion. Alright, now.
I'll just suggest it.
I'll try it again, nobody seconded my motion, so I'm gonna.
No, I.
Alright, this is my motion, I'll see if everybody can do it, I say, we hold our July meeting on July tenth. And the August meeting on August fourteenth, and if we need to hold another meeting somewhere, we just add it.
That emotion.
I was thinking that if you had a building ready meeting the week before, that would be a good time to plan it.
Yeah.
We we don't have.
Have anything planned or kind of concerned?
Do those dates work for you?
Yeah, I'm I'm not on vacation.
I did make a motion.
Second.
Alright. Catherine.
We have a motion and a second, uh, I'm sorry, can you see the dates again?
Yes, July tenth and August fourteenth.
Those are regular.
Those are regular.
Yes, right, yes.
Okay.
Uh, what day is July?
A Thursday.
It's a Thursday.
It's all, it was keeping it on Thursday. It's all, it was keeping it on Thursday. It's a regular meeting, it's a regular meetings.
Which one?
Yeah, that's a regularly scheduled meeting. Those dates.
I think it's like. I know it's a Thursday.
Will we have a motion in a second? Any other discussion? All of favor? That is. Okay. Moving on to uh, the new phone system for the town hall and the police station. So just a note on that, there's a, um, a document. That you guys able to view.
Yeah.
Um, that's the, I'm looking, where I'm looking at the purchase price. Not the lease price. Um, so this is, this is a long time coming. So I did a survey on the phone system when I first got here, uh, based on complaints. And it is very old, um. So the town hall has to reset the system every time it takes a bump, whether it's power or internet. They have to reset the system. Um, we have two. Providers right now, we have one for the phones, we have one for our phone numbers. We're gonna consolidate that down to one provider, which would be uh, virtual. Um, so you, you had the uh, document in front of you. So. Yeah, I saw it. So, um, I'll entertain a motion. To move forward with the purchase price amount on the phone system.
And that's in the non-recurring charges, that's that total right there, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So I, is this a contract that we're entering? I just wanna know how to, how I should do this.
Yeah, move forward with the proposal for the purchase also.
Okay.
Okay, I make a motion to move forward. Uh, for the purchase of a new phone system for the police. With vertical communications in the amount of nine thousand five hundred seventy-five dollars and ninety-three cents.
It's also the.
It's for the town.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, town.
Town hall is for the town.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Do we have any discussion? Before I take.
No, they need it.
Any questions on it? No?
No.
Out there? Okay.
Steve just, people know too, he's also, um, um. On um, a purchase consortium, so um, if you're registered with the state that you've already gone through the, like a master purchase agreement. He already has that too, so even though the amount is below because it's more um, ten thousand dollars, just to be clear.
Yeah, yes.
Um, he. He would be, we could be exempt from the bidding process regardless because of that.
Okay. Uh, all of favor? Post? All right.
Executive session, yes. I move to go into executive closed session pursuant to Rhode Island general law. Forty-two dash forty-six dash five for the discussion. Of personnel according to Rhode Island general laws forty-two dash forty-six dash five A one. For discussion or work sessions regarding collective bargaining. Contract negotiations or litigation according to Rhode Island general laws forty-two dash forty-six. Dash five A two. And to reconvene and open session and further to keep the minutes of said meeting closed and the minutes of all executive sessions held previous to this meeting. Be closed and remain to provisions of the general laws of Rhode Island forty-two dash forty-six dash four and five.
Second.
Discussion, all of favor? We are now in executive session.
We did take two votes. One vote was to approve the contract for the International Association of Firefighters Local 3422. Contract, well we took one vote to approve the contract with the International Association of Firefighters Local 3422 for a period of July 2025 through June 30th 2028. We also took a vote to amend a particular personnel policy with respect to the deputy clerk. And that is it.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.